If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20F, so the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Harbor Media is recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? If you could just either unmute yourself or raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I will say I'm Carrie Neam, the Chair of the School Committee, and I'm participating remotely along with my colleagues Michelle Air, Jen Benham, Ness Corente, Carlos De Silva, Tim Dempsey, and Liza O'Reilly. So next, I will take a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene an open session for the purposes of discussing the superintendent contract negotiations and to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit B, regarding the reopening of schools for the 2021 to 2022 school year, the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor of Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Okay, Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. For anyone who's attending the meeting, we are going to executive session right now. We'll reconvene an open session at four o'clock and continue with the public portion of the agenda. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20F, so the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. This is being recorded by Harbor Media. Is anyone else recording? If you could just either unmute yourself or raise your hands. Okay, seeing none. I'm Carrie Neam, the Chair of the School Committee, and I'm participating remotely along with my colleagues Michelle Air, Jen Benham, Ness Corente, Carlos De Silva, Tim Miller Dempsey, and Liza O'Reilly. So we're moving on from, we just had an executive session, and Item 3.1 is action from the executive session to discuss a proposed superintendent contract with Dr. Margaret Adams and to act as appropriate. Liza, do you want to take us through this?
And so, Carrie, can we just note there's 91 attendees?
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
No?
93 now.
Nice.
Yeah.
So, we've come to agreement with Dr. Adams for a contract for the superintendent's position. We're very excited to say. And we have offered a three-year agreement from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2025, with a salary benefits and performance incentive package that is in line with what Dr. Austin and Dr. Maestis received, and also we benchmarked it against our 19 towns, and it comes within the parameters of the town's practice for benchmarking. The contract also provides that she will participate in the MASs new superintendent's induction program. We will also provide additional mentoring support for her as a new superintendent. And we've also come to agreement with her on a consulting agreement to cover transition time from February to June 30th, so that she can get to know the district, play a role in our strategic planning, and also to be able to hit the ground running come July 1st. So, I will make a motion for the school committee to approve the superintendent contract and consulting agreement with Dr. Margaret Adams that covers for July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2025, and the consulting agreement for February 4 to June 30, 2022.
I will enthusiastically second.
Thank you both. All in favor, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. This is great news. Next is to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit B, regarding the reopening of schools for the 2021-2022 school year and act as appropriate. And for everyone out there, the Hingham Education Association is the staff union, and Unit B is the paraprofessionals. So Liza, do you want to take us through this one?
Yep. So, we came to agreement with Unit A, which is our teachers and other staff members, and for Unit B, we provided similar benefits of sick leave days that are part of the state's Emergency Sick Leave Act, that we would pay the full salary above the state's $850 cap. We also provided additional 50 days in their sick leave bank to cover any COVID absences. And we're providing COVID testing and PPE, and we are requiring them to report their vaccination status. And also, due to our challenges with finding substitutes for the district, Paris are often asked to substitute in a class, and we've offered them an extra two hours of pay if they are required to substitute. And so, on that note, I will make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit B, regarding the reopening of schools for the 21 to 22 school year.
I will also second that.
Okay, all in favor, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye, and I want to thank all the Paris for all their work so far this year and ongoing. They've really stepped up and have performed incredibly well in trying times. So, thank you to all the Paris.
I second that, and I'm an a as well. So the memorandum of agreement passes. Okay, so now we're on to number five, which is to discuss policy EBCFA, which is face covering, and to act as appropriate. So just as a little background, the school committee adopted a face policy, a face mask policy back in August, and it requires everyone in the school buildings to wear face coverings with a few limited exceptions. Then the very next day, the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, referred to as DESI, issued its own mandate, which is very similar. In January, the DESI mandate was extended through at least February 28th, and earlier this week, the Commissioner of Education announced that the mandate will expire on the 28th. The result of that decision is that decisions about mask requirements are left up to individual school committees and boards of health across the state. Because Hingham Public Schools already has a face covering policy that controls in less than until the committee decides to rescind it. So we're one of the first school committees in the state to take this up since the governor and commissioner's announcement, and that's because the school committee had previously asked Dr. Maestis to apply to the state for a waiver of the mask requirement once Hingham High School achieved an 80% vaccination rate, which he did on February 1st. In preparation for the waiver, we did a first read of our mask policy at our last meeting and are here to do a second reading and potentially vote today. So it turned out to be good timing. For anyone new to school committee meetings and policy development, we have to do two readings before we make any changes to our policies. So this is reading number two. To prepare for this meeting and for a potential vote, we as a committee have done a number of things. We've heard extensively from parents by email through conversations at our meetings and at school committee office hours this past week. We heard from students through the student advisory committee, and thank you, Elijah, and they surveyed their peers. Dr. Maestis and I met with the Hingham Education Association, referred to as the HEA, which as I mentioned before, is our teacher and staff union. And then last night, Dr. Maestis, Jen, and I met with the Health and Education Task Force, which is a group of Hingham medical professionals and educators to get their advice. So now that we've gathered all the information and the many perspectives on the policy, this is our chance to finally discuss it as the committee. I just want to note that this is, this is a difficult and unfortunately a polarizing conversation. On behalf of the committee, I'm asking for grace from the community. People have, all have strong feelings about masks on both sides of the issue, and the issue has become divisive across Hingham, across Massachusetts, and across the country. We've heard from so many people expressing many different opinions, and we're really grateful to everyone who reached out to share their perspectives and their experience. So now it's our job to make the best possible decision for the people in our buildings, given the information we have, and I'm confident we'll do that. So I thought we could start by discussing some of the information we've gathered over the past couple of weeks, and I don't know if Dr. Maestis, if you wanted to talk about our meetings with the HEA and the task force. Yeah.
Yeah, so let me kind of provide an overview of the HEA meeting that we had, the task force or advisor group that we met with yesterday, and also I'd like to provide an update on some other informational items, the waiver, also the MIAA, which is the Athletic Association for Massachusetts, and then, and then a vaccination clinic that is planned for March. So, we did have the opportunity earlier this week to meet with leadership of the Hingham Education Association. I thought it was a very productive meeting, and the whole idea of meeting with that group was to kind of gauge where the association was regarding the teachers in the school district regarding masks. And the, at that point, we knew that the mask mandate was going to expire, and we actually got some really good information from the Hingham Education Association. I think there is great concern, especially around the holidays, when we get back from holidays, and how COVID rates have spiked. I think that's one of the concerns that they, they had. They also were very upfront in identifying that this is probably inevitable, and eventually the mask mandate would go away, and they knew that, and it really was becoming up to local control. And they understand that this is an extremely difficult conversation, extremely difficult deliberation for school committees across the Commonwealth, and particularly for Hingham. So I think that's one of the things that they have really tried to impress on us when we were talking to them, is that, you know, they understand both sides of the argument. You know, they, they're in front of children every day, varieties of children, groups of children, they have to deal with situations after the holidays and these spikes. But they said that if the school committee chose to go one way or another, they would support the school committee. But one of the things that they really asked the school committee to consider is if the school committee decided to amend their mask policy is to take into consideration that the February 28th sunset of the DESC mandate is really right after a vacation. And typically after vacations that we've seen in, in the past, in the last couple of years, we've noticed that there have been spikes. And their suggestion is, you know, hey, you know what, is there any wisdom to actually phasing the mask policy? If that is the case, or desire of the school committee to sunset their own policy, which, and I think what their suggestion was is potentially having the high school students perhaps come back on the 28th, and, and they would just matriculate right into that mask optional phase, maybe the middle school would be a week after, maybe elementary the week after. And they said, you know what, it's only a suggestion, it's not, it's not anything that they would, would expect from the school committee, it's just something that they thought would be maybe desired because of, of the potential spike, and because the youngest populations in Hingham, just like most communities around the country, are hovering around 50% vaccination rate. Hingham is right around 52-54% across the board for the youngest population of students. That number, based on information we received last night, is about the same nationally. So I think that really was kind of their position on, you know, should we suggest maybe phasing it? So it was a very, very good meeting. I think they have a great deal of compassion and, and somewhat sympathetic view for school committee, because they know that this is a really difficult position to be in. And, but I really appreciate the Education Association for their continued effort to try to help us manage and get through this most difficult time. So that was kind of the theme that we saw with the Hingham Education Association. The next meeting that we had, and this was last night, landed up being with our medical and education panel that we assembled, and keep in mind, this is the same group that we met with earlier this year, when the school committee was contemplating, you know, masks and the policy, and just feedback from people that deal with pediatric situations on a daily basis, and also an epidemiologist that works for the CDC. So, we had the opportunity of meeting with Dr. Kitty Donovan, who's an epidemiologist with the CDC who lives in Hingham, Mary Eastwood, Principal at South, John Ferriss, our Director of Business and Support Services for the district, Dr. Katie McBrien, who is a pediatrician in the region, Tim O'Connell, who actually works around policy in Massachusetts, Sue Sarni, who's the Executive Officer for the Town of Hingham for Health, Executive Health Officer Rick Swanson, the Principal of the High School, and also Dr. Jeremy Warhoftig, who is a, is a regional pediatrician. And, you know, I've received a lot of email, why this group, why these people? Well, you know what, they're local. They are people that actually have some level of experience with, you know, children and policy. And the other thing too is with our local administrators, I think, one of the things that's been so difficult during COVID is management. And every time there's a policy, it's up to the school district administration to actually ensure the policy's carried out. And I think, I thought it was an excellent option to have the school business administrator and the two principals on this committee to actually give some level of input on how that translates to school operations, because it is very cumbersome. But I will tell you that this group was very, very concerned about the, the rates of, of COVID still in our communities, and I think they're, they were, they were really advising the, the school committee at, at several points during the conversation that, you know what, masks are vital, masks are important, and it's not necessarily that you're protecting any virus droplets, whatever, coming from the outside into the individual, but it's more about how individuals keep those droplets to themselves and to stop the spread, and that's what really masks are intended to do. And I think we get into this big debate about how effective masks are, how they aren't, but one of the things I think they really wanted the school committee to be aware of is that there are mitigating measures that have been put in place into schools, and their purpose, along with the purpose of the administration's school committee, is to keep kids in school. And our kids have been coming to school, and they, they've done an admirable job of weathering the COVID storm. But I will tell you that they did mention to our group, we were on for about an hour, that, you know what, if, if there was a transition to a mask optional environment, that there may be some wisdom to phasing as well, because of the spikes that tend to happen after, after vacations. But again, I think they really felt comfortable expressing what their experiences are every day, and what, what they see happening in, in our community and communities around Massachusetts and around policy around the Commonwealth. So I thought it was a very worthwhile meeting, and I would really like to extend a significant thank you to this group, because they took time out of their busy days. I mean, it took me almost two weeks to get this meeting together, because they are extremely busy, they're very active in our community, but I really appreciate their, their efforts and supporting what is, is happening in, in communities in Massachusetts. So that is, was kind of the theme of, of what's happening there. I, I do want to report tonight that there are a couple of other developments that have happened in, in the school district. I did receive a mail, an email today from the Department of Education indicating that the high school did receive the mask waiver, as of, they did receive that today. But keep in mind, it, it will, it wouldn't be active until a, a mask policy that the school committee has would, would sunset. And I also want to report that I did receive correspondence, Mass, Massachusetts Superintendent's did receive correspondence from the commissioner indicating that the 80% guidance that we had before is no longer, they are no longer accepting applications, because as of the 28th, that whole model of 80% benchmark means nothing, because the mask mandatory guidance from the state is sunsetting on the 28th. So, Hingham High School may be the last high school in Massachusetts to actually receive a waiver, and that was received today. It was right around two weeks, a little bit shy of two weeks, but we, we did receive that. And I also want to report tonight that I did receive an email from the MIAA, which is the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, and they have indicated that they are going to sunset their mask policy effective January 28th, meaning that athletes and athletic competitions from the 28th moving forward will have mask optional direction, and the MIAA will no longer require masks, but it's highly recommended and it's optional, unless a school department does have a policy, and then the policy would then, would, would then be put in place. And the last thing that I have to report on tonight is, there will be a pediatric vaccination clinic that will happen at Hingham Middle School the first weekend in March, and I will publicize the, the date and time, it'll be from nine to one, and that is run by the, by the Department of Public Health in Massachusetts. They will be coming to, to Hingham to offer both Moderna and Pfizer vaccination opportunities for children, and that will be at the middle school, and it, it may be in the gym, maybe in the cafeteria, but we're working on details right now on that, and I'll work with the middle school on those, on those dates. So, Carrie, I, I want to turn it back to you. Again, we've, we've had a very busy week around collecting information, and a lot of stuff has come in the last few days, and here we are. So I'll turn it back to you.
Great, thanks. I think Michelle has a question.
I did, sorry, thank you so much, Carrie, and thank you, Dr. Maestis. Just two things I wanted to clarify. I may have misheard you, but the MIAA change is February 28? Is it?
You're muted.
I just, I was unmuted and I muted myself. So maybe I'm trying to tell myself something. But anyway, the MIAA mask guidance and policy will expire on the 28th of February.
Okay. I thought you said January, and I was like, wait, what are they, retroactive?
I probably did. I can't keep track of myself.
I just wanted to clarify, because I know there's a lot, as a matter of fact, I know there are 176 people on the call. And then the other just minor point of clarification, but because there are so many people on the call, because you had mentioned that Hingham High School will be the last, probably the last high school to get the waiver, but that doesn't mean they're the last high school wearing masks, correct?
No.
Because other, many districts didn't even apply for waivers, so I think that's...
That's, that's correct. There, there are, I think there are maybe less than a third of, of school districts in Massachusetts actually submitted the waiver, but they are, they are no longer accepting applications for it. Matter of fact, that opportunity closed a couple of days ago, and that was a, an email sent out by the commissioner, and they are no longer taking applications, because the model goes away on the 20th anyway.
That makes sense. Okay, so I'm dying to know everyone's thoughts on this. Who wants to go first? All right, Michelle?
Sorry, thank you. I feel like I usually do anyway, so it's not, it's not fair to decide at this moment not to be the one to go first. That was a really, that was great information, Dr. Maestis, thank you very much. I do want to say that I agree wholeheartedly with the medical advice. I mean, I too believe that people should wear masks indoors when they're in public spaces. I think vaccines are incredibly important, and if you are eligible to get the vaccine, you should be getting it. You should stay on top of your boosters, and I think that is the best way that we are going to end this pandemic and return to a sense of normalcy. I do think though, that when it comes to the policy, that our goal, and when we established it, was to keep schools open. And I think that we've done a good job of doing that, right? I mean, by sheer force of will and also the dedication of the amazing staff in this district, including many of you on the screen right now, who have left your desk jobs at central office and walked into classrooms and substitute taught, so that we could keep students in the buildings and keep them in class and keep learning going. And I think people should remember that when August came and when January came, schools were dangerously close to closing, right? Because of the spread of, of COVID, because people were getting out sick, and nobody wanted to go back to those bleak days when school buildings sat empty and kids were sitting at home at their kitchen tables trying to learn. So, to me, our goal was in putting our mask policy back in place, because I also would like to remind people that we did rescind that policy at the end of the school year last year, and, but in August, we felt it necessary to put it back, because we wanted to make sure that schools would stay open. At that time, I thought that, like, we sort of knew DESI was coming with, with the, with the mask mandate, and so we sort of crafted what we kind of assumed what DESI was going to be doing, and we sort of waited patiently for DESI to come out with their mandate, but they were a day late, right? Because we already had kids coming back in for tryouts and classes and photos, and teachers were already coming back into the building, so we moved to put our policy in place. So, I do think that in my mind, when I voted for our policy back in August, I was, I was expecting our policy was going to really closely mirror the DESI policy, which I think it has. And I think now that DESI has, is making a change, I'm feeling more comfortable following the mask optional guidance that they are, that they are recommending now. Particularly because I think we do have a solid inventory of high-quality N95 and KN95s that we can provide to students and staff who might need them. But I do also acknowledge that this isn't easy at all, and if we move to mask optional, I wish this could be like the joyful moment, that COVID is over, but it is most certainly not. February 28th or March 15th or whatever day masks go optional, the pandemic isn't over. And this is a really sober moment still, right? There's, there's not a victory here for any one side, regardless of what we decide. And this decision is really hard, and the information Dr. Maestis just gave us made it even harder, I think. But I think for myself, I really carefully considered this, I've tried to make it as thoughtful and measured as I could. I know that all the people on this call are the same, have the same dedication that I do to our students and our staff. I mean, if we didn't care, we wouldn't be here. And I know it's a lot of people who think there's a simple solution, but there's really not. And this group takes into account all of the families and all of the staff who make up this incredible school community, and I just, I just need us to all remember that. So anyway, I hope people will respect whatever decision is made. I do, I personally believe that I think we should move to the mask optional model Monday for, you know, the high school now that we have the waiver, and then for the rest of the, the schools beginning February 28th. So thank you.
Great.
Thank you. That I meant to talk.
Great, thanks, Carlos.
First of all, thank you to all the parents on both sides of the, of this issue that reached out to us. And we will, would appreciate that they continue making sure that whatever decision is made today, that they encourage and educate their own children to be respectful of the, the students wearing masks, and that, you know, be fully aware of it, that our anti-bullying policy is still in place, and that will not, any type of bullying will not be tolerated by the school or the department. Having said that, I am 110% in favor of one, now that the waiver for the high school have been approved, we heard from students, we heard from the medical experts, we heard from, you know, HEA, I appreciate all of the input as well. And I think the right thing to do is to, one, allow the high school students to go mask optional, it's then effective Monday, Valentine's, give them that as a Valentine's gift. One, two, that we follow desk guidance, and as effective of... And as a factor of February 28th, that we go mask optional. You know, and we do hope that individuals that intend to continue, you know, to continue wearing masks do so. And I believe that in now any delay past the 28th is just speculation, right? I mean, we did, it did spike at one point, but we have to understand that we didn't have as many people vaccinated. You know, although we may not have 80% of some of the schools, I think it's fair to say that the great majority of residents in Hingham are fully vaccinated. So without saying anything else, you know, I am, when time allows, ready to continue to make my motion that I started on Monday. And with understanding also that the mask optional will be at the schools and the sports, but not at the buses because the buses and, you know, the driver's ad program, which is, it is still our automobile, needs to follow, well, especially the buses. I know it's a federal mandate. But I would say that we should keep it also on the driver's ad. If especially if the driver, which is happens to be one of staff, it's not quite comfortable. So I wanted to also bring to the attention of my fellow school committee members that I was on Mashfield meeting right before hours at 3:20 PM, 3:00 PM started. And out of 102 parents participating online, only two left, you know, lift their hands against, you know, lifting the policy. And they did vote unanimously to approve the lifting of their mask mandate effective the 28th. Thank you.
Great. Jen?
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yep.
No, I just, I want to, like Carlos, I want to thank the parents who reached out past few weeks with their thoughts and comments. This has been challenging time and I fully recognize that we're still in a pandemic, that this pandemic does not end come February 28th, when the state mask restrictions expire. We have the availability of several COVID-19 mitigation strategies, such as testing and vaccines and masking. However, I believe we need to let our parents decide on masking their own children. And I am in favor of rescinding our base covering policy and following the state and Dussie guidance. Not suggesting people shouldn't wear masks. I'm just in favor of choice. Additionally, I feel strongly that we must be considerate of other people's choices. Catching COVID can have different impacts on people's lives depending on their own family or their family member's health. And we need to provide students with supportive environments that will ensure that those students aren't bullied or criticized for wearing a mask. So I think we should move towards rescinding our policy that would allow the high school to go mask optional on Monday and the remaining schools to go mask optional on the 28th.
Great, thank you. Ness?
Hi, can you hear me? All right. Yeah, I mean, I want to echo what everybody has said. Just thank everybody for your feedback. Thank you to the HEA for meeting with us and the medical team and Elijah for your team for pulling together that student data because that that, you know, it impacts you directly. So I think it was really critical to hear from the students. I think the masking has been a hotly debated topic since the beginning of this pandemic. These are unprecedented times and we've all had personal experiences that have made these times more challenging. The pandemic hit our community and our schools in ways that we've had to learn to work together in order to move forward. And I appreciate that COVID is here to stay and that we're going to have to learn to live with it. And I don't take my responsibility lightly. That all said, I want to echo what Michelle said. There's no doubt in my mind that we've made the right decisions with regards to masking from the start. It's frustrating that we ended up putting in the mask policy the day before Dussie came out with theirs. It caused so much infighting in our town and I mean, we're our community members and we have to learn how to accept and honor one another without becoming so heated. One of the things that I learned while we were doing the Sustainable Budget Task Force is that there are of the 400 people who left, there are some who went to private schools and there are some who pulled out to be homeschooled. But then there are people who in there, they have second homes in New Hampshire, Vermont, and they decided to leave and enroll their kids in districts there. And in talking with a few people, they don't know whether they're coming back. And the biggest reason is because of the negativity in the town. And that is disheartening. And we can't live in a community that that happens to. Our kids are watching. They see it. It's not what we're teaching them. So I don't think we should be acting like that as well. So, you know, I would plead with everybody to just find a better way to communicate. Get off social media, please. Call people, have the conversations, meet for coffee. It's just so much more productive. But at the end of the day, I, as a school committee member, I have a duty to represent all the students. It's a tricky balance at times. The, and people who have written to me this week, they're going to, they're going to hear a lot of what I have written back to them. The younger students, they're learning how to read and articulate their words and socialize. They're learning fine motor skills and gross motor skills. And it absolutely would be more beneficial for their development to have the masks off. However, that was the group that couldn't get vaccinated. They got vaccinated last. Then you have the other side of the spectrum with the middle and the high schoolers, and they were the ones who would get vaccinated early on, yet as we learn with the Delta and the Omicron variants, they could still get COVID. And being out for five plus days as a high schooler is detrimental to most of the students. It's a major reason why there's so much stress at that level right now. But they're not only contending with themselves being out for five plus days if they get sick, but they are also trying to figure out lessons when their own teachers are out. And there have been so many staff that have been out. I appreciate that with the variants that most who are vaccinated experience cold-like symptoms, but if you've got COVID, you've got to be out and it's a really challenging environment to try to educate kids. There are, there are many kids who are sitting in the auditorium. So you know, what good is it for them to be masked off and not have a teacher who's going to show up because we can't find substitutes? So it is a fine balance and I want people to appreciate that. And everybody's gone through collective trauma and we, we need to remember to extend grace and patience. And that includes to our administration and teachers. They've been working extremely hard throughout the pandemic. And I know there are some who are frustrated because they wanted us to look for a waiver early on. We are a district that has been running lean for so long. And and the example that I've been giving people is that when Dr. Maestas has to pull together data out of our system himself because there, there's just not enough support, it would be equivalent to asking a CEO to go in and do an inventory of pencils. And yet this is the district that we're in right now. So it's really challenging. And so again, it is that balance. So I've been sharing my views with people who have reached out separately and how my thought processes change. And because science changes, my opinions will along with it change. I was really excited to lift our mask mandate back in the spring last year. It was such a positive step after a really difficult year. I really only changed that position when we learned that vaccinated people were able to transmit the virus. And I had been clear with people, I was going to be comfortable lifting masks once all school age children were eligible for a vaccine, which was in the December-January timeframe. I was grateful that Dussie extended the mask mandate when they did, as we learned from the spike last year during the holiday, that we were going to see a spike after this holiday break. Again, difficult to run a district if we've got too many teachers out. And our priority this year had to be keeping as many students and teachers as possible in school for in-person learning. One lesson that we learned over the past years that the lack of in-person learning is harmful for students in multiple ways, not only academically, but socially and mentally. And this year, the state did not allow for remote learning. So it was especially important to avoid mask warranties. So what I heard this week from the town administrator at the select board meeting was that we've got a town that's 83% vaccinated. 60, I heard 68% of the five to 11-year-olds have been fully vaccinated, which I think is is a great a great percentage, given they were just allowed to back in November. There's been a significant drop off of COVID cases over the past couple of weeks. And if anyone's keeping track of the the wastewater, there's been a sharp decline. So that's good news. And at this rate, I would be comfortable removing the mask mandate and following Dussie's guidance. I think that they've made the right calls with regards to masking this this winter. So I'm comfortable following their guidance going forward. And then I would just remind people, whichever way we decide today, I hope everyone remembers that this is a sensitive matter on both sides. And and I would just plead for people to be patient and kind and talk to their kids and help kids normalize that others making decisions are going to be difficult and so that we need to extend grace.
Thank you, Ness. Liza? So you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So I, I agree with what everyone has said and I, I did read every email. I may not have responded to everybody, but I did read them all. And a couple of things that struck me from these emails. Someone said, as Governor Baker stated, given the extremely low risk for young people, the widespread availability and the proven effectiveness of vaccines and the distribution of accurate test products and test, test protocols and tests, is time to give our kids a sense of normalcy and lift the mask mandate on a statewide basis for schools. I, I agree with that. I applaud the town for the vaccination rates that we've achieved. I encourage anyone who has not been vaccinated or boosted, or their children haven't been vaccinated, to please do that. I'm glad to hear that we're having a clinic in March to make it easier. And then also, we have accurate test protocols and tests. I encourage everyone to sign up and do the at-home testing that's free and available once a week. My child did it and was a little hesitant, but then took the test and was like, oh, I'm negative. Good. I'm good to go. It gave a boost of confidence and to continue that maintaining of monitoring is very important and that's available to anyone that wants that and it's free. So I believe we should all do that and also respect everyone's choice of what they choose to wear when we move forward. Another quote that was given to me said public, that the governor said was, "Public health circumstances may still be different from community to community, however, and local school districts may decide to keep unmasking." So I believe we should go along with the Dussie ruling on February 28th and make masks optional. However, I do want to propose that we edit our policy to be consistent with what Situit did. So that in the event, so Situit has provided the superintendent the opportunity to put in masking if necessary. If we, as the medical groups said, you know, they're fearful of a spike. If we had an incident in one building, for instance, that we needed to have masking for one week, two weeks due to an extensive outbreak. If right now, we would have to go through this lengthy process of the school committee approving a policy and having two meetings to hear it and go through it again. However, if we can edit our policy that it gives the superintendent the right to confirm with medical experts if there is a need to take that quick action to put a mask requirement in and to remove it as well, just as quickly, then we don't have to go through all these school committee meetings and editing policy. If we're simply going to rescind our policy, then what do we do if we quickly have to take care of something? So that's where I'm coming from, is that I want to give everyone the choice. I believe people, our community has done as we've asked of getting the vaccination levels and, but I also want to make sure that we're prepared going forward because we don't know if there's going to be another variant. We don't know if there's going to be spread within one of our schools. And I would rather us be prepared for that chance. And to be able to act quickly and keep as many kids in school and and staff safe as quick as possible. Rather than going through this lengthy process again and having people get very worried about it. So I did edit our policy. I can share with people if they want to see it, but emails from the community alerted to me what Situit was doing. And so I looked at what they did and I spoke with one of their school committee members and got their policy. And so that's, that's where I am.
Okay, thank you, Liza. Tim?
Hey, save the best for last. I'm not, I mean, I think people can see the writing on the wall if people are keeping score. I'm additionally for rescinding the policy. I'm echoing a lot of the reasons that other people said. I kind of want to use my time for tomorrow. I'm looking, looking at the attendees right now. There are 186 people on this call. And I don't think that masks are the most pressing issue in Hingham schools right now. We have a new superintendent coming in. We have, we're going to have a new business director coming in. We're building a new elementary school. We're building new strategic plan. All of this is happening during budget season. And I know people have been on a lot of calls specifically because of the mask issue. And I think the really the tipping point for me about supporting rescinding the policy and not supporting adapting it or changing it, but just living under the state policy is seeing what it's doing to the town and seeing what it's doing to the public in town. Ness talked a little bit about the tone in town. I'm more looking at the challenges coming up. There, you know, as I said, there are 186 people on this call. I want 186 people to go to the select board meeting to support the school budget. I want 100, now 187 people. I want them to, you know, be involved in telling us what they want to new business director. I want 187 people to be going to the design meetings about foster. I want when it comes out in June, I want 187 people to sit down and read the strategic plan for the schools. People saw at the beginning of this meeting that we approved the contract for our new superintendent, Margaret Adams. I would love 187 people to write her a letter and send her an email saying, how can I support you in your agenda for Hingham schools? The same way that you've sent all of us individually emails over the past six months. And so I, people have talked about this is the, you know, not the end of COVID in our society and in our schools. And I want to double down on that and say this is not the end of involvement in our schools. This is not the point where we walk away from the school. So I'm supporting rescinding our mask policy in the spirit of bringing the town together because I think frankly, we have bigger challenges. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. I think you all covered a lot of what I had to say. I do have some lingering concerns about after February break. There are always, you know, COVID in the past has spiked after February breaks. And I understand last year, few kids weren't vaccinated and they are this year. So that should help with that. And that was something that was raised by the medical team too, that it's just the timing of of Dussie is unfortunate. But that's not what I'm hearing from the rest of you. And I do, I trust this committee to come up with with the right call with this. I do think we should talk about what to do. Liza brought up the Situit thing. And one of the questions with the medical, the health and education task force last night was, so what benchmark would we put in place to put it back? Like, what are we, and there really wasn't a good answer. And we've kind of seen that at every point that if it's a new variant and, you know, Omicron was, is more contagious and we don't know what's coming down the pike. It's nuanced. So I mean, we could do what Situit did and give the superintendent the authority. We could also rely on Dussie going forward, which it sounds like, it sounds like what I'm hearing from, from everyone on the committee. But I mean, I'm in favor. I think the the high school, I'm glad that the waiver came through and I'd love those kids to be able to get a little piece of normalcy. I echo everyone's concerns about stigma to for people. And that came up with the HEA as well. There was There's concern, there are students in town that have to wear masks either for their own health or for their family members. And we want to make sure that they are supported and that school feels safe and welcoming to them. And they don't feel bad about having to do that. So I think we heard a lot of that when with the old Desi policy, which was going to require would require if we got a waiver that kids who are unvaccinated would have to wear masks. And we heard a lot of concerns from parents of kids who are unvaccinated about their child being stigmatized. And I just encourage all of those parents to speak with, speak to your kids and explain you know, it's the shoes on the other foot now. And there are kids who who have to, who are going to have to wear masks and just make sure that they're to support them. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know where people are about the amending the policy or just following Desi. I guess can we maybe just do a show of hands, like who wants to amend and who wants to just follow Desi? So who wants to amend? Okay. Okay, so it looks like, Liza, do you want to say anything else, Liza, or do?
Um, my only purpose for proposing an amendment is to make our lives easier. In in the event that it's an insurance policy. I'm not opposed to rescinding February 28th. But but then I really don't want to, while I'm on the school committee, have to go to emergency policy subcommittee meetings and then, you know, review it again with school committee meetings and have Friday at four o'clock meetings to vote a second time on a policy. And if we don't have to. And I would also want the school nurses and the administration to have the support of having the tool for the superintendent to be able to act immediately if there was a situation in a building that required it. So that's my only reason for proposing it. If we also want to let the policy subcommittee review it and vote on it at another time. You know, that that's fine, because I am bringing this up now quickly. But I just feel like there's still so much risk with the whole pandemic that can we be prepared as opposed to having not thinking about that? So it's up to all of you.
Okay. Carlos, did you have something?
No, I appreciate Liza, your feedback. As I had stated on Monday, you know, initially is that, you know, we should, we have a very competent and we are so fortunate to have a you know, a super competent superintendent. And I feel very comfortable that should there be, you know, an increase of, you know, a spike on on COVID again in one of the schools that he would do the right thing. And I think that's what we want to do. Rescind the policy and just essentially allow the superintendent to make the decision, you know, and we are constantly asking him to make recommendations to us. But I don't think that we should have, you know, a red tape on this anymore. And, you know, if he brings to our attention that we need to do something other than he is, you know, putting, you know, a mod out there, then perhaps we'll act then. But I don't think it's going to be necessary.
Okay, thanks. Elijah?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add, I think that having that additional sort of safety net would actually go a very long way. As we saw with the survey, I I it's divided, it's inconclusive, and I could not tell you what the large larger reaction would be either way. But I believe that people would trust in this committee to lead us in the right way. And I think that that would be a comforting presence to have if it were to be rescinded.
Great, thanks. Jen?
I I think we should just resend for now. I fear I fear that giving that to just one person will be more will be more decisive decisive within this community. And we should just follow what what Dusty is saying. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. Okay, Michelle?
Thank you. Um, I, having been one of the seven people holding this hot potato, I do not wish this upon any individual person to have to take it over. So I would hate to, especially since we haven't had an opportunity to ask Dr. May as to how he would feel about such a amendment to said policy. But I do, I appreciate the logic because I do, I do think you're right. I mean, we've all said it, right? It's not over. We don't know what the future is. I do think while many don't like the Zoom meetings, they do allow us a lot of flexibility, even just I was thinking about this earlier today that, you know, if if we did not have our meetings on Zoom, this meeting probably would not have been able to happen today. And we would have been looking at next week to do it. So I think we can be nimble enough. And I hope that from folks hearing the comments that we are making tonight and thinking about this and recognizing that while this is a step forward, it's not a victory over COVID. And that as a community, people can be responsible about this, right? We're not, we're not mandating masks cannot be worn inside of our buildings, right? We are saying you have the option to wear a mask. And if we see spread rising and you see emails from your school building principal, your classroom teacher, or our superintendent saying, I'm concerned, we're seeing a spike, we're seeing more cases. People will do, people will need to do the right thing and will need to put you, you can decide to put the mask back on for a few days until we can subside. So I'm comfortable in just rescinding the policy and not not amending it. But I do hope the community will heed the advice that comes if if something does come again from a classroom teacher, building principal, or the superintendent saying, hey, we're concerned. And we'd like to encourage people to to, you know, mask up for a couple of days.
Great, thanks. Can I ask Dr. May as to weigh in on this? It is a hot potato.
Yeah, well, you know, the only thing that I will tell you is on Monday morning, I will go into John Ferris's office and I will put in a requisition for bodyguards and a bunker to be installed at my home. Because just watching what has happened with the school committee and even the aggressive nature of some of our community members around this issue. I think it would be extremely difficult for one person to take on this responsibility. And if if you want me to do it, and you think that's something that I I think you trust that I could manage it. But it will come at a cost. I think all of these decisions have come at a cost to the school committee. I have seen a extremely, extremely dedicated and functional school committee just be beat up. And it's, it's unfortunate that it has got to that point. But you know what? I think it's I I do have some level of faith in the Department of Education and the governor. If things start to get carried away, there would be a move to actually, you know, go to a mask mandate that we have already, but that we've had already. But you know what? I'm, I'm, I'm the interim. I'm, I'm here as a consultant, kinda, to guide and to support. If the school committee believes that they want me to fulfill that role, John and I will have a conversation.
Yeah. Well, the other thing to think about too is you are the interim. And, you know, COVID is not over and we might be having this conversation again next year. I mean, I hope we're not. I really hope that we're on the tail end of this, but I don't know. It's a lot to put on a new superintendent to. Michelle, did you have something?
I do. I'm so sorry. Thank you. And thank you, Gary, because I appreciate you saying that. I was, I was trying to be lighthearted about the, it is a hot potato that no one wants to take on. But I appreciate you, you putting it out there because I will say that, and I was debating about whether or not to to mention this because but this has taken a big toll on on this committee, right? We are your neighbors and your friends, and in some cases, your family members. And I am incredibly grateful for the vast majority of people who sent emails saying, thank you for all you do. I recognize this is hard work. I'm glad I am not in your shoes. Those are really heartwarming, heartwarming messages to receive. And honestly, some of them brought a little tear to my eye. Because for a long time, I don't think many of us have felt that appreciation. What was really hard was to get some of the emails that I think people would be surprised to know that we got. You see on the news, some of these towns where people go into school committees with weapons and threatening people and making intimidating and horrible comments to them. And we would watch that and think, oh, my goodness, that's awful. That would never happen here. I don't know about the rest of my committee members, but I I received a couple of emails that would qualify as a felony under United States law. I mean, threatening and intimidating elected officials is a felony in this country. And I I got emails that were not just veiled threats. And that's, that's really disturbing. And it's not what's going to move us through the next few months. This is a group of unbelievably smart. I'm taking myself out of this, by the way, but there are six people on this committee that are very smart and very thoughtful and very dedicated. And we do this work because we care deeply about your kids, right? And we make our decisions based on all of those kids. And if we're not making decisions based on all of the kids, then we have no right to be sitting in these chairs. But we sit here day after day, literally almost day after day on these meetings, trying to get this work done. So I do, I do think the vast majority of people have been very respectful and very grateful, and I appreciate that. But I do think Gary brings up a good point that we need to be mindful that there is a lot of divisiveness right now. And I'm hoping this is a way to move ahead and change the conversation.
Yeah, thank you. Gary?
I just want a last comment that I'd like to make. And I I neglected to to mention this. But, you know, we have our students to think about. You know, all ages, preschool, all the way to grade 12. But we also have our teachers and support staff, bus drivers that, you know, they're watching all this stuff happen. And they're saying, please help us, please support us. We really need to support them in this transition. And, you know, I know that there will be teachers that will be wearing masks no matter what. And that's going to take, and students, same thing. But you know what? I think Michelle and the rest of the committee bring up some really good points about how do we become the example and how to how to handle situations? And I think we need to, we need to do that. And I think this committee has been trying to do that, but it's been extremely difficult with the growing dissension on a national problem. But Hingham is is a great place to be. I'm just so grateful to be here during this time. We have some great teachers, some great support staff that just want the best thing for kids. And I think, you know, it looks like things may transition. But please, let's be mindful of others' opinions, be mindful of others' positions, and they have to. And we do have staff members that have have mitigating circumstances that they have to consider as well, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. So with all that being said, are we ready to to vote? Looks like it. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
May I?
Sure, go ahead.
I move that we rescind the mask policy adopted in August to be effective February 28, 2022, accept in all our schools with perception of school classes, which is a federal law. Furthermore, I move that the superintendent and his leadership team will inform the school committee if there's a need to go back to mask.
So before we go forward with that, I was, we have the waiver at the high school. And what I thought I was hearing, and I definitely support going mask optional on Monday there.
So I would say include it. So I can add empowering the superintendent and his leadership team to inform us of the necessity of going back to a mask. And also allowing the high school that met the requirements to go mask mask optional effective Monday, 14th, February 14th.
All right, sorry, Michelle.
No, that's okay. Could I, Coach, would you mind if I amend your, amend your motion? To make it, I think that a motion to rescind policy EBCFA effective Monday, February 14 is all we need.
Right, that's right.
Because in that moment forward, we'd be following Desi, which means the high school masks would come off, could come off, could go mask optional on the 14th, and then the rest of the district on the 28th.
Yep. Okay, is there a second?
I don't know if I'm second or.
You made the first motion. I just.
You made the motion, Michelle amended it, I think, next, next second. All right, so all in favor? Michelle?
I.
Jen?
I.
Yes?
I.
Carlos?
I.
Tim?
I.
Liza?
I.
And I'm an I as well. So policy is rescinded. Next is to discuss proposed overnight field trip COVID travel policy filed JGH and IJOA and act as appropriate. Jen, do you want to take us through this one?
So I had, as Gary mentioned earlier, we had also asked the medical task force to give us their opinion on our overnight field trip policy that it's not currently our policy. We already did a first, we did a first read on it back in December. And then it went back to the policy subcommittee to go to the task force. So here we are, and I thought we could discuss. I guess we're doing a second read of that policy.
Right. Did you want to walk through the recommendations of the the task force?
I think Gary, I think Gary covered it, but I can let me just pull up, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Are you able to share on the screen? If you don't mind.
I'm gonna try.
Few years in, I still would not be able to do that. So I give you a lot of credit.
That work?
Yep.
So we asked, let me just back up a little bit, back when we had it at the first read. There was discussion among the committee about the possibility of doing a testing option. So we did bring that up with the medical task force and their recommendation was to keep the vaccination and tests there was their recommendation. And I didn't know if the committee wanted to discuss that. I would like to discuss it.
They also recommended masking on.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, as they left a Hingham bubble, but.
I think we were trying to explain that the overnight trips where the you were sleeping, you wouldn't be masking, my.
All right. Yeah, there was concern from them about leaving, because Hingham does have a pretty high vaccination rate in the community. But as they travel to other places, that may not be the case. So they don't want them to go on a field trip and come back and spread it was the concern. So does anyone have any thoughts on this one? Michelle?
A lot of thoughts today. Thank you. I do. So I think this is the policy that we were talking about a couple of months ago. And I think what we were talking about is we started going through it, again, sorry, I don't remember, like in December. I feel like I remember people, myself included, leaning more towards testing requirements versus vaccination requirements. Because thinking about no, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I don't know, that that was my recollection, that that's where we, it sounded to, felt like to me, that's where we were sort of leaning when we did the first read of this or the first review of it a few, a few months ago. I I struggle with because I do, because we don't the vaccines, I guess I just struggle with, is a, the field trips are school sponsored trips versus extracurricular trips. And I just, I don't know, I get, I just what, I just get concerned about it because there isn't a vaccine, the COVID vaccine requirement for schools as we stand here today. And so, I don't know, I I was still sort of leaning towards the the requiring people to test in order to go on the trip. And given that testing is so much more accessible now, and we have the home options and all that, but open to hearing other folks' thoughts.
Liza?
I I'm in favor of keeping the vaccination requirement because the reason that the governor is and the commissioner are rescinding the mask masking is because so many people are vaccinated. That's the goal, is to have as many people as vaccinated as possible. And that's, that's what it's, we're still in a public health situation, and that's the recommendation. I heard Rick Steves today saying that all of his trips for the next year will require vaccination for everyone attending because it's in the best interest of everyone on the trip and for keeping everyone safe. As far as the testing goes, I I would, you know, we had talked about that as well. One of our concerns was the complication of getting a PCR test, because that was basically what was readily available at that time. If we're going to add a testing requirement, I would want to give the option of somebody providing a rapid test as that testing requirement, because that's readily available. It's free, it's quick turnaround. So right before they go on the trip. But I I would want to keep the vaccination requirement.
Carlos?
Yeah. I did a lot of, you know, research on this. I believe that the venue where visitors, all visitors, whether the students, you know, all visitors are going to will have their own restrictions in place. So with that, I don't want to stop someone from going to on the trip because they are not vaccinated. So I would not have a problem with the masks, obviously, because we just, you know, made sure that the buses is a federal law. So they will have to on the planes. For now, it's still federal law. So I would be in favor actually of not requiring the vaccination. Thank you.
Tim?
Yeah, I think what we're really concerned about with kids going on an overnight trip is A, are they themselves going to get sick? B, are they going to get other people sick? And I think for, in terms of if the kid is going to get sick themselves on a trip, I think, you know, this is separate of the vaccination, but I think there needs to be a waiver or something that says that if if my child, regardless of vaccination, regardless of, you know, anything, if my child gets sick on the trip, I am responsible for getting him home. I am responsible. It's a risk to go on an overnight trip to a different state because they're obviously not going to take the bus home with all the other kids. They're not, you know. So I think there needs to be some sort of waiver involved in there, but I think the rapid tests that you get in the store are the best indication right now of somebody's ability to infect other people. If they're, you know, giving off enough virus to be able to infect other people. So I think a test is more important than the vaccine. I'd look at the test requirement before the trip as the primary, because that's more of an indication than the vaccine about whether they're going to get other people sick on the trip. And I and I would not be bothered by dropping the vaccine mandate, as long as it was replaced by it pre-test, because I think that's a more meaningful measurement.
Yes.
Yeah, so I I agree with Tim. I think I I would be in favor of dropping the vaccine requirement, because as we know, vaccinated kids can can catch it as well and give it. I would be more comfortable with the testing approach. And I wouldn't want someone who is unvaccinated to feel left out of these important trips. I think that's conversations that they need to have with their physicians. I don't think that we should be in the the business of making these health decisions for the kids and their families. And there there might be valid reasons why they don't get vaccinated, but I I wouldn't want them to miss out on these opportunities. I do think testing is more important and it tells us more and it's more reliable. So I'd be in favor of dropping the vaccine mandate and going with testing approach.
Jen, did you want to weigh in on this?
I'm sure. So I I agree. I don't think, I'm not in favor of there being a vaccination requirement for all, for all overnight trips. I do think that there are some, I think there are some trips that do require for the vendor. I think if we just, I think that's something that would come up within those proposals when they present them to us. So my question is, this is, this policy is a vaccination overnight trip policy. So do we, and it's not current, it hasn't been accepted as policies, it's just in draft form.
Right, so what's the question?
So my question is, what, how do we proceed from here if this isn't, if I'm hearing consensus? I think I'm hearing consensus about not being a vaccination requirement. Well, we would add in testing. So I guess that we would add testing to the policy.
So I do think, and sorry, Michelle and Carlos, I haven't spoken yet. I do.
I apologize, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, I'm in favor of a vaccine mandate with this too. One of the themes that came up with the Health and Education Task Force yesterday was that, you know, masks are, you know, they work and they were supportive of that, but they were adamant that we have to get, we have to get people vaccinated. And this would be be an incentive to do it. I mean, we would obviously have to have mechanisms in place, whether it's testing or something else for kids who absolutely can't get vaccinated. I know they're out there. And we're, and we don't want them excluded. So whether it's an additional testing requirement or or they just do the testing requirement, we could talk about that. But but I, no, I I do think we should keep the vaccine mandate if possible. All right, Michelle?
All right. Sorry, I had three points. I need a second here to remember what they were. I think one of them was to Ness's comment that we, that the I guess my point on what, just following up a nest to say that all the decisions that we had made up to now, even talking about this to begin with, were made with the information that we had on hand at the time when we were making them too, right? So I'm just thinking that, like, in this case, like initially, when we were talking about it, particularly this Washington DC trip for the eighth graders, it did seem like, you know, requiring a vaccine, vaccine does seem like a good decision to make at this time. I I think because at that time, testing wasn't readily available. It was hard to come by. It wasn't accessible. It, we didn't know what was, what was more reliable, is it PCR, is it, you know, rapid test, like, what are, what are we looking at? And now we do know a lot more stuff. And but I I do worry about kids missing out. I do think that for folks who are listening and thinking about this, like, I think they should recognize that many districts are not even allowing overnight field trips. So I think that's a very important distinction. We are doing everything we can to try to make this school year as normal as possible by allowing these things. So, you know, give us some measure of understanding how we're trying to grapple with this, right? Because we're just trying to make it so that kids can have a normal experience, but also be safe. And I agree a hundred percent. I mean, if I could drive, get every person out there who's eligible to get vaccinated, to get vaccinated, I would do that with every spare second of my day that I have. I just, so I think we absolutely, as a committee and a community, should do everything we can to encourage people to get vaccinated. But I don't think, I I don't think this is the right, I don't think this is the right way to do it. Because I think kids, I I think there's other options available, and I think that the testing makes a better, makes for a safer experience versus the vaccine for the particular trip.
Okay, Carlos?
Tests is the way to go. Just want to plug in PSA to the town. For those individuals that doesn't have some test kits, test kits will be distributed by the town on Sunday from one to four, the February thirteenth, and then on Tuesday, again, one to four, February fifteenth, and they will be available at the three thirty five Lincoln Street. So if people are interested in getting some, I did apply for some for the feds, so I am waiting for four of them to come to my home. I hope they arrive soon, so I can have them here. But yeah, so I'm not sure whether we still need the vaccination policy in place. But if we if we are going to have a sort of like, I'm not sure what you're going to call, but I'm a hundred percent for the test. And now people are able to, you know, to to receive a test. And the school actually is distributing them to, to the families that opt in to participate in the program, so.
Tim?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I don't think it's neutral whether or not people get tested or or whether or not people get vaccinated. And I think vaccines are the way that we're getting out of this pandemic. I think that, you know, everyone who appreciates the last vote we took to get rid of masks, that vote was only possible because of the vaccine rates in the schools. I don't think anyone on this committee would be, would have voted to remove masks if vaccine rates were not what they are. And my kids are going on the Washington trip. I would not personally allow my own children to go on the trip if they weren't vaccinated. And while I respect everyone's choices, I fundamentally don't understand the parents who are able to get their kids vaccinated but are choosing not to. So, and I don't mean that with any disrespect for those parents. I mean, really, really, I don't understand. And so I, I mean, vaccines are the way out of this. But going, you know, back to some of the arguments about using this policy, and the medical team wanted to use this policy because they think it's so important that it can help raise the vaccination rates in Hingham. I don't think that's an appropriate use of school committee that to pass a policy about, I'm sorry?
Sorry, that's, that's not what they said. Yeah, no, they, they said, oh, yeah, no, their advice was that that you should have a vaccination requirement, you should test and wear masks. I I'm the one who said, that was my take, so.
I don't think that's an appropriate use of school committee. I think our field trip policy needs to really be about field trips and not about public health in Hingham.
Okay. Liza?
You know, I'm all in favor of taking the test for eligibility to leave on the trip. But they're going for several days. And if they're unvaccinated, they're at a higher risk of catching this. And then, and even if you're vaccinated, you can catch it too. So, you know, anybody can catch it, but if you're vaccinated, it's a much low lesser impact and it's protecting more people. And so just taking one test, you know, that that at least we know everyone leaving is going to be healthy, so you're not starting off with anything, but you could catch it while you're there. So and, you know, Michelle just said, we want to make everyone give the experience and be safe. And I believe the safest way is to be vaccinated. Now, the other thing I I ask is, we've already approved the overnight field trips. Do we have more that are coming down on our plate that we're gonna even need to approve? So yeah, and so I guess I, I'm not ready to rescind what we already voted on the trips that we already voted. But I guess, you know, do we have more planned?
The Dr. Mike, do you know?
I do not know of any outstanding field trips at this point.
Carrie, sorry, there is that one that is a revised field trip that request that's going to be coming? For the model U N. So the model U N at Harvard is, I think, canceled, but it's moving to B U, so that one's going to come. But I I think it has a requirement. I think the vendor has a requirement for that one.
Carlos?
I believe this is the policy I ended up voting no, because I was in favor when the vaccination conversation came about, if I'm not wrong. But one thing I would like to suggest to Jen's point is that, you know, we asked on the application, there was disclosure on the application about the non-refunds and so on and so forth, the requirements. Perhaps, you know, I'm not sure if the policy would be the one doing this, but we need to perhaps revise the application, you know, for the field trips. I think we should be put a little more burden on the, you know, administrator or the the person applying for those trips that, you know, you need to check with the vendor, with the venue to see what are the restrictions in place, including perhaps, you know, if they have a vaccination requirement. But any other things, because to Tim's point as well, individuals may get sick out there regardless of how, it could be just a flu or whatever. And up until now, what has been the mechanism? I mean, hopefully, I don't, we've never experienced this before because we never heard. But individuals could get sick out there for whatever other reason, or break their legs or whatever. So, you know, with the with the application, with a little, perhaps, little policy on the application helps versus a huge school committee policy, perhaps we should consider that.
Yeah. I think I would just add that I'm uncomfortable disagreeing with the the health professionals that we're relying on for these. I I haven't, does anyone have a good reason to not follow their advice? Yeah, yeah.
I am uncomfortable with it because it's not fully approved.
Okay.
Still an emergency, so that's my, that's where I'm uncomfortable with.
I'm uncomfortable because I think the, when we were talking about vaccines, it was before Omicron, which shown, you know, very effective of getting people sick, not as sick. The degree in which someone would get sick without a vaccine seems to be an issue between them and their parents, where whether or not they're transmitted to other people is an issue for the trip. So I mean, I I think the the tests give us better information about the kids that are going on the trip, about the safety of the trip, than knowing whether they're vaccinated or not would give. That's my reason.
Okay. Liza?
Can I make a proposal that we send this back to policy and have policy come back with the recommending, the wording on the testing, because I I guess it's getting a little late. And I I I'm not really clear of what the wording would be anyway. So I I guess I'm proposing that.
So that.
I'm confused as to what we're actually voting on tonight, now if we're going to be voting on something. Or can we bring this up at another meeting?
Yeah, Jen, what do you think? Does it make sense?
Well, I think, I think the, my question is that how this, if we're just going, if it goes back to policy and we do the testing, how does that impact other trips that we approved with a vaccine? Would that cancel that out? No.
No, I don't think so. I mean, the other thing is that those trips were planned so long ago, people had to sign up by certain deadlines to just make the arrangements for the trip. So I guess if the. So I guess if the, if, if we're talking about the middle school, if the principal can come back and and he says, we can i- if there's a chance of changing just testing, we can accommodate ten, twenty more kids, that's a different situation for me, as opposed to like, you know, what are we specifically talking about? So.
I mean, could we, we, could, could I make a motion to revote that, uh, vaccination requirement?
That's not on the agenda tonight, Carlos.
Okay.
All right, uh, for the, for the D C trips.
So, uh, I'll second Liza's idea, send back to policy, and hopefully, uh, in the meantime, we can investigate to see if there is a, but, you know, an opportunity to open up to other students as well.
I believe it is.
Is it, Michelle?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I was, that's what I was just sort of wondering, that what impact could this have on the, on the eighth grade trip? Um, so I would, it'd be great maybe to get some more information from the middle school, like, how many kids have signed up? You know, I mean, how many, how many kids have signed up? Um, how many want to sign up that maybe haven't already? Is there an opportunity for them if something did change? Um, you know, if we, because I would have, I would have thought that if we revised this policy, or didn't adopt this policy, that that would have potentially negated the, the requirement for the vaccine requirement for the high school, or the middle school trip, sorry, but.
Yeah, I think I sorry, uh, no, I I think it probably would if we made that change tonight, um. Right.
Oh, you're thinking timing wise, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But we voted that specifically.
Right.
Uh, uh, yeah, it, like, I'm hoping to, like, if, if there's a chance for the middle school, I'd rather hear that and understanding where it is and how many more people want to go, and they, and they didn't vaccinate, I mean.
So they could bring it to us, right? They could bring that information to us.
Yeah, I'd rather have specifics than, that feel like we're spinning our wheels on this one.
I do too, and I'm thinking, right, they they could come back and give us updated information on that trip and ask us to reconsider, I'm just thinking, because we are actually going to reconsider the model U N field trip, it's a change of location, a little bit different, but.
Yeah.
If that's what we're trying to solve for here, without anybody wanting to say that.
No, that's, that's true, if that's the, yeah.
If this is.
Because I'm thinking with this policy, there's a couple other ways you could, sorry, Tim, I'm so sorry, but there's a couple other ways you could do this, I mean, I'm not I'm not suggesting it, but like, I mean, other districts aren't allowing overnight field trips now, because of it, right? You know, I mean, if we feel strongly, that's a concern. So.
Yeah.
Stuff to think about, yeah.
I was saying, if it's going back to policy, could I ask the policy also addresses the liability of kids who get sick on the trip? Uh, who's responsible for getting those kids home, all of that, uh, whether that's parents, and that's just a risk by signing your kid up for a overnight trip and they sign a waiver, or what, that's an unanswered question for me.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, Jen?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think that would be follow under procedure, but we can definitely talk about.
Okay, so I'm hearing we're gonna bring this back to policy, and if the eighth grade wants to revisit the trip, then they can um, reach out to us, is it, whatever, okay. All right, that sounds good, so we'll put this on the, I guess, the next policy agenda, Jen, or one coming up. Um, all right, so seven is other items, as may not reasonably known, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting.
Uh, just a month, thank you, uh, Carrie, uh, for agreeing to put on the next, uh, meeting on the twenty eighth, uh, discussion uh, to go, uh, to consider, you know, in person, yeah, of this whole committee, so have the discussion there.
All right. Um, okay, so with that, I will take.
Can I say one thing before you?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Just because this is an issue last time, I see a couple people have their hands up, I just want to make it clear that we, it's not that we're not calling on people, it's just this isn't a regular school committee meeting, so there's, we're not taking public comment.
Thank you, Tim.
I don't want people to think we're ignoring them or blowing.
No, 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 definitely not. Um, okay, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor, Michelle?
I.
Jen?
I.
Ness?
I.
Carlos?
I.
Tim?
I.
Uh, Liza?
I.
And I'm an I as well.